Now I'm on. Yvette, we've been waiting for you. Thank you for coming. You held the whole meeting up, but for you, we would wait. Okay, let's start. Call to order, City Clerk.
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Mann.
Present.
Smith. Underwood Jacobs.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Christ.
Present.
Mayor Chairman Perez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The invocation is Pastor Darmy. Gotta help me. Sule Odu. Okay, thank you. He's from Redeemed Christian Church.
According to the Word of God, in 2 Chronicles, chapter 7, verse 14, and proud of that 14, Solomon had built a temple to worship God with his people. And he accomplished his feat by the power of God. And at that point, he lifted up his voice to pray, to thank God for what is done for him. In rising up and lifting up his voice to pray, God answered his prayer according to the Word of God. And we are here to do the same thing today. Father, we thank you because of your great mercy and grace over us as a people. We thank you for the city of Lancaster. We thank you for the leaders that you have given us. We thank you for all the things that is happening in our community. We know we have no power of our own to lead ourselves or to accomplish anything by ourselves. Today, we call upon your name that you come and help us. And I place your blessings upon the people of this land this morning even by reasons of this assembly. And I ask, Father, that you guide us through, give our leaders wisdom, knowledge, understanding, give them the ability to deliberate today and discuss and dialogue and arrive at a conclusion even in their deliberation today. Thank you, mighty Father, for we are praying in Jesus' name. And everyone can say, amen.
Amen. Youth court for the pledge? Mariah Mitchell, if you come up and lead the pledge of allegiance. It could have been worse. I could have asked you to do a speech.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Give me two seconds. Marvin spilled my coffee, so I've got to clean it up here. It's gonna be one of those meetings. Okay. Why don't, um... Angela, why don't you and Ken come down with me and we'll do the youth court. Pass this over. I'll take that. Leave it down there. Are we doing, Mark, are we doing this after or now?
Is that where we're going to start the youth court?
No.
Oh, Mr. O with you?
No. There's only...
Wait, when is it?
Never mind, I'll just do it.
Some people are more intuitive than...
You know, he gets to do that. I don't know that you do. Okay. The City Council would like to thank the 2015 Lancaster Youth Commission members for their service this past school year. Tonight marks the end of their term and would like to present to each member with a certificate of appreciation for their service. This year's commissioners in their respective high schools are Karen Ventura. If Karen would come up. You were late. Well, let's, uh...
I can hear it. There's like, you know, you can change the source, the input source.
Good, stay here. Okay. Bobby Mubarki. And Creed Broadwater. Jamie's not here. So, how'd you like it? Learned anything? Great, great. We were glad to have you. Let's get a picture. Okay, Ron and Yvette Imar'd. If you would come up. This is the one?
Yes.
So, we're announcing Yvette and Ron Imar'd Week for June 22nd through June 28th. Ron is the founder of Thunder in the Lot and Kids Charities President. Yvette is the Executive Director of Kids Charities. So, let me tell you how, what that means. It means he gets the credit and she does the work. The Imards have always been strongly committed to our community. Together, they have embarked on a lifelong journey to help children throughout the Antelope Valley. Thunder on the Lot was founded in 1995, raises funds to benefit children and eradicate child abuse. Ron's motto, "It should never hurt to be a kid," this year, June 27 and 28 at Lancaster City Park. Yvette and Ron later formed Kids Charities in 2000, helps disadvantaged youth throughout the entire Antelope Valley, benefits more than 30 local charities, has raised $4 million for charities since its inception. In addition, the Imards coordinate other community events, including Grace Fest AV, Women of Worth, the annual Kids Charities Chill Out fundraiser. Thus, we are declaring June 22nd through 28 as Yvette and Ron Imar'd Week. Thank you both for remarkable impact. Speech.
Speech.
Speech. Yeah, you gotta do a speech. But before you do, understand this. No one in the history, in the history of the world, has ever had a week of Lancaster dedicated to them. And we don't do that lightly. We do that because you have done such a tremendous job in fulfilling and uplifting this community. And we are forever grateful to you.
Well, you know what? It is a tremendous honor to be designated this theme for the week. Wow. Really, we just hope that the focus is on the kids charities and what Kids Charities is doing in this community to serve thousands of children. But one thing to keep in mind about Thunder on the Lot and what Ron and I do and the agency that we run is that we're doing all of this together. The events like Thunder on the Lot bring together law enforcement, bring together business owners and volunteers, you know, up to 1,000 of them, hundreds of participants, all the charities and their volunteers as well. So, when you look at it that way, really, we're doing Thunder on the Lot together as a community, and that's something we take a lot of pride in. So, thank you.
And obviously, tonight with the young people that were here, what we're doing does work because we touch a lot of kids and we see the development. We see them go, go back to school and do a lot of things. We've got scholarships. We've got a number of things that do touch youth. And it's really delightful to be here and be part of this community, so we thank all of you.
Now, Marvin, if you hadn't spilled my coffee, you could have gone down there, too. Oh, look, it's spilt again. Nigel Holly's here. Nigel is going to take the oath for the Tapestry Commission. And who are we? So, did you go to your first meeting yet? Did you go to your first meeting yet?
I did.
Good. Glad you didn't miss the first one.
Do you solemnly swear and affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
I do.
Don't move, don't move. We need a photo op from up here. Come on up here. Watch out for his coffee. See how the light just comes down? No, 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 no. I need it, I do. We're gonna do a photo op. I need you to...
I need you to reenact it.
No, look at her. Wonderful.
One more.
Thank you, thank you. Now, we ought to have at least one out of that. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes? So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously.
Mayor Perez, I think we have one more presentation.
Did Leo get here?
No, number four, the Antelope Valley High School.
Okay, who's doing that?
Jason can introduce if you'd like.
I couldn't read it, there was a coffee stain on it.
Marvin strikes again. Mayor, thank you very much. Mark and I had the opportunity to attend a, an art program at Antelope Valley High School put on, not in cooperation with S-Power, as well as Antelope Valley High School. And today, we have Nikki Olson and Garrett Bean to report on the outcome of that. It was, again, another example of giving back to the community as well as the impact that green energy can have in our community. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Garrett.
Can we pull CC 6 to talk about it? Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Garrett Bean. I'm with S-Power, and this is Nicole Kent.
From Antelope Valley High School and GE Academy Coordinator.
We have a couple students with us today. Israel Chora.
Shawna Lester.
Alexis Salguero.
Thanks for taking the time to hear about the program and really what we're doing in the community right now. Clearly, this has been a day to really feature the youth, and this is something, a program that our company, S-Power, has been working on with the Antelope Valley High School. It was a solar sculpture and scholarship program, so we all know how much solar influences Lancaster, the valley, and what we've been trying to do here with renewable energy. So, we really wanted to make sure that we worked with the classroom and the community members to kind of take a different approach at it. Nicole, if you wouldn't, you'd mind saying a couple of words of kind of about the program?
Sure. So, our, the GE Academy is, is a small learning community at AV High School. We service about 250 students. Those students are all co-horted, and they are learning all of their core subjects and their elective courses through the eyes of clean technology. So, we have a two-pathway academy, whereas business and engineering, and we focus on how those two things, those two entities marry each other in the clean industries.
So, how we became involved, we do utility solar in the Antelope Valley. You guys know about us and see us all over the place, but the reason why we partnered with them is really to kind of bring a, to introduce utility-scale solar and green energy industry into the classroom and see how we could work together. So, when we sat down and started talking with the high school and with Nicole and the students about it, the goal was kind of twofold. One, it was really to prepare the students, work with them, educate them about green energy, how it can play a vital role in their community, and then also introduce them to the industry, to career pathways, to opportunities that would be presented to them through this, through the renewable energy field. So, we came up with kind of a different approach. S-Power donated a couple solar panels to them, and we did a sculpture and art contest with them, and we also gave out scholarships to the, to three of the teams. So, the program elements really was developing a sculpture using solar panels. The classes made videos, they worked with event planning, they also went out into the community to present their work. So, it was really kind of learning about the technology, using it in a creative way, working through it as a team. I think, how many students do we have in the academy this year?
In the academy, there's 250 students, but with this project, we focused on the senior class, and so there was 43 seniors participated.
So, really focused with these 43 seniors, kind of developing these sculptures, working through it. Three of the students were awarded a scholarship to use as they saw fit. And then there was the Makers Fair, and the Makers Fair is actually an event that was held in the Bay Area. So, S-Power worked with the students to bring them up to the Bay Area to present on what they had been doing, to interact with a lot of the other schools and community members in the area, to really see what was going on with renewable energy, not just in Lancaster, but in the state of California. So, that was a pretty cool event. The results, you'll be seeing them in the city of Lancaster in the next couple of weeks. It's a little bit hard to see up there, but if you guys wouldn't mind maybe telling a little bit about what you guys did in the program and...
Maybe just wrap those pictures up there.
Yeah, and what you guys came up with.
Well, we made three different sculptures. As you can see, on the bottom left corner, it's the globe, and they actually broke one of the solar panels that they had into pieces and made like a mosaic out of it, and it's a yoga ball in the center of it, and they just, you know, glued it all together and added leaves, so it basically represented like a solar world. And then, the, oh, the top corner one is like a poster to raise awareness for solar power and to show that there is unity behind, it's a group effort to try to become solar, more solar-friendly, more eco-friendly. And then, oh, and then the house is a net-zero home made completely of solar panels, and it had a driveway and a 3D modeled car, 3D printed car and everything. Those are basically the three sculptures.
And then in the bottom right, you can, it's a little bit hard to see on the PowerPoint, but it's a picture of all the students out at the Bay Area Makers Fair. And then the last thing that they did was they presented to the city of Lancaster faculty members, S-Power, other community members and their families at the school, and they did a fantastic job. So, we wanted to bring them up in front of you and recognize them for, for all their hard work and dedication. So, thank you.
Garrett? If someone wanted to get ahold of S-Power and talk with you about doing something with their home, how do they do that?
You can go onto our website at spower.com, and then there's plenty of contact information there where you can reach out to our company, and we'd be glad to help out anyone that we can.
Okay, thank you.
Where in the city of Lancaster will the sculptures be featured?
Jason?
We're working on transporting them now, so we're hoping within the week we'll have them over here and showcased in City Hall.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, Barbara Boswell.
You gotta do the consent.
No, 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 she's got a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Christ, Councilmembers and Commissioners. It's my pleasure to present to you the award the city has received from the Government Finance Officers Association. It's the Certificate of Achievement in Excellence in Financial Reporting, and it's for our comprehensive annual financial report dated, for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2014. The certificate of achievement is based on, is judged by the GFOA by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the annual report. The city of Lancaster would not receive an award such as this without the leadership The city of Lancaster would not, uh, receive an award such as this without the leadership and policies of the mayor and the council, and certainly not without, um, a good supporting staff. And I'd like to, um, acknowledge Pam Statsman, Tammy Holliday, Nicole Rizzo, Monique Edwards, and Kathy DeFaco for all of their work. Maybe they wouldn't mind standing up to be recognized. I think we've received this award, um, maybe twenty-seven, twenty-eight years running, so... It's a lot of hard work, but we keep going.
Twenty-seven years.
Yeah.
Wow.
We have the plaques to prove it.
You got a great staff.
We do. Leo's here.
We've been waiting, Leo. We, we haven't, we haven't done anything, just sitting here waiting for you.
I am so sorry. Never keep you waiting. Unless I had good reason. They're called kids. I'm dressed, they need an extra hour. At least that's my excuse. Come on, babies. They've been swimming at his house. They didn't want to leave you.
Hey, we don't, you know... The Antelope Valley's own Leo Stallworth, everybody recognizes him from Channel Seven, embodies what it means to be a model citizen, as proven by his ongoing commitment to improve life for our valley's residents. A seasoned reporter for ABC Seven, Leo recently helped raise awareness of the Bennett family situation, which helped this local family raise tens of thousands of dollars. Born with severe disabilities, Shelley Joy was abandoned by her family and grew up in a group home. Most of her caregivers believed that she was too handicapped to see, think, or hear. It wasn't until her teacher, Dana Bennett, came along and adopted Shelley Joy, that Shelley's potential was fully unlocked. However, Dana Bennett struggled as she had to physically carry a twenty-two-year-old Shelley to her van, as well as lift her, lift her hundred-pound wheelchair. Desperately needing a specialized wheelchair-lift van and having no options left, Dana reached out for help, launching a GoFundMe account. Leo took interest in Dana and Shelley's troubles, sharing their story on ABC Seven, raising awareness, and eventually raised them sixty thousand dollars. Personally, he was so emotionally compelled by Dana and Shelley's story, no, who put that in there, never mind. I really gotta read these things first. Due to Leo's actions, a devoted mother can now continue to provide quality care for her daughter. On behalf of the city of Lancaster, I would like to thank Leo for taking a personal interest, encouraging others to show their support for these fine Antelope Valley residents. Leo, you are what we are all about. Thank you. Okay, Mark, you can come downstairs. Nice, a little coffee. How do we all come down? Okay. Let's get the picture. Come on, get over here, guys. You gotta get behind it. You'll star, right? Okay, there we go. At home, on the cook and everything else.
This guy needs to be off the front.
And he, he's also a single father. I mean, imagine what Leo has to do. He has to get up, get to LA, drive all over the, the place filming this stuff for ABC, and get back and take care of him, the kids. This guy is a tremendous guy. I can't, he's one of those people that I wouldn't have got to known had I not been mayor, and you make being mayor worth it. Okay, thank you. Wait a minute, one more. I know you laugh because it looks like a smile. Thanks. Okay. Better. You did.
We have, uh, speaker card that pulls CC four, CC five, and CC six.
Okay, let's pull it. Is there a motion as to the remaining consent calendar?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, do, uh, do we want to approve the minutes?
Already did. Already did.
You did?
I thought we did.
Apologies.
And he made a motion, I second it, we took an oral vote.
Here we have this riveting meeting, and you, and you, you missed the minutes.
They were just a little out of order.
It was unanimous.
We started from the back and moved forward.
It's the coffee up here. Yeah, it's the coffee.
I wanna keep you guys innovative, and so I mix things up, you know? It keeps us all... Okay, Maria Pizano. Yeah. Sorry about that.
Yeah, it's okay. Um, I've tried to make it in here for the past month and a half. Um, uh, I was unable to do so because of, um, a month and a half ago, my place was ramsacked, everything was stolen, all my writing, everything that I have written and my books, my notes, and everything for the past three years. Um, I tried to make a police report on it, which I haven't been able to. I also had a, um, a few lawsuits going at that time and an appeal going, and I wasn't able to do anything with any of that because of all my things stolen. At the time, I was writing some things about gang stalking, sex trafficking, some power, some things about the power facilities that were going on here in town. Um, like I said, when all those things were stolen. I have the pictures, my, even my telephone with all my backup information and everything was stolen, three of those were stolen. Um, and, uh, I just wanted to let you know what happened with all of that. Um, there's some issues, I know that we have CC four. Um, because of all those things that were taken, uh, like I said, all my notes and stuff, I'm trying to just go along with, with the language in these, in the agenda, to be able to talk about some of the issues. Um, and CC four, for the drainage benefit. Um, I believe that during that, the time in two thousand and five, was the beginning of purposely planning to take over and to take away people's, um, let's see, I don't wanna put this, um, yeah, taking from certain people and giving to others, draining what you have, your assets. I've lost my home, my vehicle, all my business license, my teaching license, my driver's license, all because I was trying to report on some of these issues that are going on that are very serious issues that are happening, not just here. I could cite a lot of acts, um, Trading with the Enemies Act, all the acts in nineteen sixty-five, the, uh, Declaration of Principles, which is the Israeli-Palestinian Act. I could state, I could cite many of them that are causing, um, not problems just here in our country, dismantling our country, but all over the world. Um, all the youth programs that are actually, let me just say, uh, the KB Home situation, the contaminated homes that we're paying for to clean up, um, the Topco Association, which is, I'd like to know, Topco stands for exactly and how many businesses are associated with Topco?
Thank you.
Well, there's three things, can I please talk on, every time I come up here, these are serious issues.
Thank you. Maria, thank you.
Mark, you wanted to make a correction on number five?
Do I get to come back up or anything else, please?
On CC five, I apologize, we have a typographical error, the location was incorrectly stated. We've, uh, corrected that, it's at Avenue J and Thirty-Fifth Street East.
Is that funny, Lee?
Thank you.
And on CC six, can we have a, uh, a quick presentation on what we're doing there?
Uh, certainly, that's what the Measure-R Fund's, uh, Carlisle Workman will give the
Mayor and council members, this item before you tonight is, is to authorize a, an agreement with Caltrans to kind of move our Measure-R projects forward to the next step. This would allow us to, to go forward and prepare the documents necessary to, um, with Caltrans, work with them to develop the plans and environmental documents. We've done the project study report, and that's being circulated, this would be the next logical step to further those interchange projects that are being built.
So, this is for Avenue M. I just want everyone at home to understand that we're going to spend over twenty million dollars on that project on Avenue M?
Right, that would be Avenue M. We all, we have, like, say, several interchanges, this is for Avenue M, and we're taking in a, a more of a programmatic approach, and we'll be working with them to develop all of the interchanges. Avenue M is one of the first ones. So, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
No. I just wanna make sure that, my understanding, too, is after Avenue M, are we moving to Avenue K? Where's that at, Mark?
Um, Avenue K is one of the ones that we're also working on as well, too. I'm not exactly where it's sure in the design and approval process, but I, I think it's important for the public to understand, um, through the work of Ken, Mar, Palmdale Representatives in the county, we were able to get a lot of money into this valley for all the interchanges, and, um, that this, there's sixty-five million dollars coming into Lancaster that, um, you guys were able to get. That's gonna do all of the interchanges in Lancaster, there's additional interchanges in Palmdale that are being done, and in the county. This is a joint project on Avenue M with, um, both the county and the city of Palmdale. So, it's gonna be a lot of work over the next several years on the interchanges in the Antelope Valley.
Ray Hunt, our, our capital programs coordinator, can give us a, a better schedule on where we are with which interchanges?
Good, 'cause obviously, if we commute to the city of Lancaster from the south going north, Avenue K is a very key intersection, and we often see traffic back up clear on to the, you know, to exit off, and they're still on the freeway trying to get onto the on, the off-ramp.
Both Avenue M and Avenue K are running simultaneously. Avenue M is being, uh, prepared with in-house staff at Caltrans, where Avenue K, we have consultants doing the work. Uh, we expect that K, due to the, um, Avenue M's actually a larger bridge reconstruction, K is just a, a modification extending, uh, the pocket, allowing for more stacking, you know, off the freeway, that that should end up moving ahead of Avenue M, you know, as we get through to construction.
Great, great.
Are we doing G all the way through Avenue M?
The other interchanges include Avenue G, Avenue J, and Avenue, some modifications at Avenue L, and it's actually in that order. MK simultaneously, G, then Avenue J, and then Avenue L. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion on four, five, and six?
Motion to approve, um, the consent calendar, CC four, CC five, and CC six.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Let's vote. Okay, public hearing item one, yes, public hearing item one. Any cards?
We have one.
Who's presenting?
Uh, the three of us will, actually, four of us.
It would be appropriate to open the public hearing.
Oh, that's right, open the public hearing. That's why they put an underline under "open," right?
Did we open it?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Mayor Paris, city council members, it's a pleasure to be before you today to present the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen budget. My job is to put the budget development and proposed budget in context, and then you will hear from Barbara, Jason, and Ray on some of the highlights. I do mean highlights because it's impossible to present a budget and analyze it in a presentation format. That's why it's available for review by any member of the public, we've had meetings with the public, anyone who's requested it. It's also why in the city of Lancaster, we do it in two steps. We do a public hearing first, uh, and then two weeks later, the council considers adoption, giving other people the chance to comment on it as well. It represents months of work by the council and the staff. End result is to allocate funds towards the programs and projects that best serve the residents, businesses, faith-based, and nonprofit agencies. Also, sometimes budgets take on a role they shouldn't, which is a document to say no. That is not the case in the city of Lancaster. A budget is a document that sets priorities and parameters, but it's what you do within those parameters that matters. As a simple example, I could budget two thousand dollars for the mayor to invest in, uh, do an investment, and I can, uh, budget two thousand dollars for the vice mayor to do an investment. One could invest in the next Google, the other could invest in pogo sticks. Those are gonna be vastly different returns.
He's got napkins.
Or coffee coasters, not a growing industry. Um, but in that vein, we've budgeted ten million dollars this year, and you'll hear a lot about Revive Twenty-Five in the coming minutes, but it's what we're gonna do with those monies that's unique, and how we're gonna show the public, and how we're gonna take a systematic approach to our roads. And it's also indicative of the many complex projects in this budget. As we look at some of the initiatives we've undertaken in twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen, those initiatives are a turning point for this city, and they are the implementation of several council priorities over the years. Lancaster Choice Energy, the first phase launched in May, this October will be adding fifty thousand customers. You'll hear about, from Barbara, about that. Traction Seal, our license to provide the product to Southwest United States, we have the production operations down in that, we have specced the use of Traction Seal for our city, in fact, our contractors are putting down thirty-five miles of that right now on our roads, and we have our sales consultant and our staff out to various other communities, municipalities, to have them speccate for their roads. Uh, you will hear Jason and Ray talk a little bit more about that. Acquisition of streetlights are, is going to be before the PUC this August. We expect approval of that, and then over the eighteen months, you will see the transition of eighteen thousand streetlights from SCE to Lancaster, saving money and giving us the opportunity to provide additional neighborhood services. You'll hear from Barbara on that. And you're seeing a lot of these items come to fruition, but it shows the foresight of this council and this community, because it also means additional revenue sources and financial stability and growth for the city. Cities that rely on the old model of sales tax, waiting for big boxes, waiting for retail, are not going to make it, because retail is changing before our eyes. We can't go into the names of them, but there are two well-known retailers that have big-box stores in LA County, that their dot-com sales are up twenty-five percent year-over-year, just this year, but their in-store sales are down five percent. In the sales tax world, that means that the sales tax is not being generated at those sites, but it's being generated in a pool environment. As the internet sales become more active, we have to continue to stay ahead of that, and that's why the foresight of it, doing these additional projects and revenue sources is so important. In terms of priorities for the upcoming year, uh, financial stability is always one, replenishing revenues that we've had to use to bridge the gap in the economic downturn. Public safety is always job one. Despite all the obstacles we've talked about, that have been talked about, um, Jeff, at the Criminal Justice Commission, we're making inroads. Burglaries in Lancaster are down. Um, we are now implementing an idea that the mayor brought up at the last meeting, which regards, uh, reporting of crimes at stores, which is gonna free up deputies and get a truer picture of actual crime at shopping centers. So our public safety staff and the Sheriff's Department have the resources they need to continue that. Revive Twenty-Five, I've talked about, but we will be touching every road in the city of Lancaster, improving it over the next ten years. That will be the bulk of our presentation tonight. Medical Main Street is in this upcoming year, and through planning and investment, we're gonna take our most unique asset, which is the healthcare district, and greatly leverage that to enhance the economy and the community health. That's an important initiative that you'll be seeing going on. And in terms of business attraction, business attraction is also about business retention and growth. We have a jewel right here in Lancaster, in BYD, that by twenty seventeen will provide almost seven hundred jobs. There are a lot of jewels in Lancaster and businesses, and our job is to help those businesses thrive and grow, and the economy is starting to help that out as well, too. As I turn this over to Barbara, I would point out that the most important part, or one of the most important points of our general fund budget, which you're gonna hear... of the most important points of our general fund budget, which you're going to hear briefly about, is that it's balanced. Revenues and expenditures matched. That's a testament to conservative financial practices and improving economy and revenue outlook, and council priorities that are showing dividends. And as I turn over to Barbara, I want to sincerely thank her and her staff, in particular, Pam Statsman and Nicole Rizzo. They lead our city budget effort every year. They do a remarkable job in that, among all the other priorities and tasks they have, and we wouldn't be where we're at without them. So, it's my pleasure to introduce Barbara Boswell.
And we are pleased to present a budget that maintains reserves while addressing the priorities as established by the council. We talk a lot about the general fund, but in actuality, the budget is made up of many different funds. The total budget as proposed is $140 million. It is an increase from fiscal year 1415 adopted budget, primarily due to the costs of the Lancaster Choice Energy operation, as well as traction seal operation and increase in our sheriff contract. Public safety, being the number, single largest component of the budget and the number-one priority of the city, represents 20% of our total budget and 40% of the general fund budget, followed closely by Development Services and then Lancaster Choice Energy. The proposed general fund budget is $59 million in revenue and $59 million in expenditures, a balanced budget. We talk mostly about the general fund because it is the most flexible of funding sources and supports the majority of city services. Those include park maintenance, public safety, all of the programs that we see on the boulevard, those sorts of activities. Lancaster Choice Energy will be fully operational in October of 2015, with the remaining residential and business customers coming onboard. At $24 million, the proposed budget is second only to public safety and development services. Lancaster Choice Energy will procure and sell electricity to customers within city limits, and Southern California Edison will distribute this power and bill on our behalf. We also anticipate that the California Public Utilities Commission will approve Lancaster's acquisition of its streetlights from Southern California Edison. Ownership will provide opportunity to control costs while implementing energy efficiency Included in the budget is our capital improvement program at 16 million, proposed at $16 million. Within the project, we have, within the program, we have projects that are spread throughout the city. These projects are funded with a variety of funding sources, all of which are restricted and include funds such as transportation, grants, and developer fees. Highlights of the projects include pavement maintenance, east side pool rehabilitation, various Highway 14 interchange improvements, and other intersection improvements. As part of the budget, staff is proposing an adjustment to the city's fee schedule. Adjusting fees is part of a recommended best practices for financial stability for cities, and we have looked at fees for discretionary services. The city has not adjusted their fees since January of 2010. Our fees are based on costs, and we undertook a comprehensive cost study. In addition to looking at costs, we compared the proposed fees to our neighboring communities and also to the marketplace. Fees that are proposed are not just going up, there are many that are also going down. Again, this reflects improvements in efficiencies and processes and to reflect the actual cost of service. We're also adjusting our fine schedule to better match those of our neighboring communities. Implementation of the fee adjustment will be phased, with phase one going into effect in October of 2015 and the second phase in October of 2016. I'd now like to turn the presentation over to Jason Cottle and Ray Hunt for a presentation on our Revive 25 program.
Thank you, Barbara. As Mark and Barbara mentioned, one of the major pushes this year is, or this decade, is going to be the focus on our road maintenance and road system. Lancaster's extensive road network is the city's most utilized asset. It's our highest value asset, and it's the city's most visible asset, as well as the first impression people have of our community. Our road network is also the asset which will cause the biggest cost and problem, if not adequately maintained. For this reason, the city has been working hard to improve and transform Lancaster's roadway network. The city's worked diligently to develop such things as the comprehensive street networks, complete streets program, pavement condition indexes, road diets, pedestrian-friendly amenities, as well as bike lanes and pathways. But a critical part in keeping Lancaster's road system at its top of the game is ensuring that the streets remain desirable and well-maintained. We've been working diligently to improve our state of our roads. In fact, 120 lane miles were treated just last year. However, until now, we have not done a great job of sharing our successes to the public, defining and defining an achievable goal. That's why we stand before the council today, seeking approval to launch Revive 25, a program which will build upon the city's efforts to improve the safety and economic vitality of Lancaster's transportation network by preserving and improving our most important asset, our streets. Revive 25 defines a goal, which is to revive every lane mile within the City of Lancaster by 2025. And by revive, I mean that we will maintain, improve every street within 95 square miles of our city. Revive 25 tells a story regarding everything that we are doing to improve our roadway systems, and we have allocated $10 million in this upcoming fiscal year to achieve this goal. I will now turn it over to, and introduce Ray Hunt, our capital program manager and development services, to tell you how we're going to achieve this goal. Good evening, council. We will be developing multiple strategies to accomplish the goals set forth by Revive 25, all of which, which will extend the life of our pavement, result in safer streets for all our users, increase property values, result in less wear and tear on vehicles, thus, financial savings for our citizens and our visitors alike, create more desirable streets, and reduce the amount of overall road maintenance needed to address the city's street system in the future. Resulting cost savings could be used for other quality-of-life issues. The immediate successes these road maintenance efforts have realized thus far demonstrate the feasibility and profitability of the processes we're using to carry out the Revive 25 plan. By the end of this coming fiscal year, we'll have completed an additional 221 lane miles of street maintenance. Now, as you can imagine, with almost 1,700 lane miles of streets within the City of Lancaster, ranging from newly constructed to streets well over 30 years old, the maintenance strategies we will employ are as varied as the types and mechanisms of pavement distress we encounter. For simplicity, we can classify those distresses in three categories. Surface distress, asphalt distress, and then the entire pavement section distress. I'll take just a couple of minutes to discuss each and share some example strategies for maintenance. We'll start with surface distress. Here, we are addressing the top surface of the pavement, and sometimes down to one, maybe two inches. Surface distresses include fatigue cracking, oxidation, and friction loss, to name just a few. These streets are in relatively good condition and candidates for topical maintenance strategies used to extend the pavement life at very low costs. An example of this is shown here. This is Avenue G8, north of the AV Fairgrounds, where our maintenance crews apply traction seal. We are currently evaluating non-disruptive technologies of heating the street and rolling it to redensify and close surface cracks. Second category is asphalt section distress. Now, for this distress, we're looking at the entire pavement asphalt section, all the way down to the aggregate base section that supports the asphalt. Again, there's a wide range of distress types and maintenance strategies for these types of streets. On the lower end of the spectrum, we could see minor thermal cracking or minor raveling. On streets with these distresses, we sometimes construct chip seals, as pictured here on 10th Street West. On the other end of the spectrum, where cracking may extend full depth of the asphalt, we may require removal or rework of part or all of the pavement section. We may use techniques like spark halo, which is the in-place warming treatment and redensification of asphalt, or conventional milling fill, which is the removal by grinding and replacement with new asphalt pavement. Additionally, we have cold-in-place recycling, which is the in-place grinding, mixing of the asphalt, applying and reapplying the, recompacting the recycled material, and with a new pavement surface on top. These are just a few of many techniques we have in our toolbox, and they all come with their own limitations and benefits. The third category is pavement section distress. Now, here, we're focusing on the entire structure of the pavement, asphalt, the underlying aggregate base, and the supporting soil. In this case, the distress is oftentimes beyond that of just the asphalt. In many cases, our older roadways were not built to meet our current traffic conditions. The increased loading causes failure, and oftentimes, this occurs from the bottom up. With pavement section distress, we have implemented several techniques. To name a few, central plant recycling, which is the removal of asphalt and the base section, taken it to a plant that was erected nearby the project site, the actual mixing of that with additives, the placement of that material back in the roadway, and the construction of a new asphalt lift. This technique allows the reworking of the soil if the subgrade issue is an issue. The areas that have good subgrade soil, we could use a technique called full-depth reclamation, where the entire pavement section is milled and mixed in place, compacted in lifts, and topped with a new AC surface. Pictured here is a conventional reconstruction. What we see in some of the older county roads are maybe a couple inches of asphalt on dirt. In those cases, there's no real solution than building a new road, so constructing a new aggregate base and pavement. Regardless of the techniques, and again, there are many, all projects in excess of one inch in thickness are required to go through a competitive bid process and are managed by the capital improvement program. Works such as crack filling, pothole repair, traction seals, chip seals, and any other methods that we discover that are less than an inch in thickness can be accomplished through our maintenance group. Now, I'd like to invite Jason back up to the podium. Another critical part of Revive 25 is making sure that it's communicated well to our citizens. As mentioned earlier, our streets are a critical part of people's perceptions of Lancaster. For this reason, we need to communicate and allow the citizens to understand that this is our top priority, and something is being done to protect and preserve this critical asset. We will be working to ensure that Revive 25 is visible, in that every time this logo is seen at a Revive 25 construction zone, citizens will see the progress made toward the overall goal. We also want to make sure that the product or the campaign is shared with the community. Progress throughout the campaign will be documented and made available via public, via social media, weekly e-news, our website, Channel 28, and of course, the local news. And this process will allow them to understand where we are at in our goals. And then annually, we can come report to the council during the budget to share our accomplishments and set our goals forth for the next coming year. And most importantly, enabling our entire community to stay informed about Revive 25 as the story unfolds. So, with that, that concludes our budget presentation. I would like to thank Katie Byrne for putting all that work together, hard work and effort. All those, the pretty prezzy that you saw today had nothing to do with Ray or I. So, it has to do with a great communications team, and also, obviously, the people who presented and prepared the budget did a wonderful job, and will be happy to answer any questions. And if Barbara and Mark can come join us, we'll be happy to answer questions.
I have a question. Perhaps it's for Barbara. I was wondering, in regards to reserves, how do you determine the amount that's needed for reserves, and what is the utilization of those funds?
Oh, great question. There are some standard practices or recommended best practices. It's fairly typical that most cities maintain or have a policy of maintaining a 10% operating reserve. We have such a adopted policy, and we have maintained our 10% operating reserve, not only in the good times, but also through the bad times. But in addition to that, the city has also established a financial stability reserve. In the good times, that reserve was in the neighborhood of 25% to 30%. We have had to dip into that reserve over the years in order to balance our budget. It served its purpose well, and we still continue to maintain that reserve. It will be in the neighborhood of 8%, I believe. And one of our goals, as the economy turns around, is that we replenish that, because we know the good times don't last forever, and you want to have that, those reserves set aside in order to help you through the downturns. Thank you. You're welcome.
I wanted to go back on record. The, we spoke about the Revive 25, and I want to make sure that publicly, everybody understands our intention is to do, how many road miles this year? As our total, I think we, Ray said there was 1,700 road miles? Want to make...
There's a total of 1,700 road lane miles within the city limits, and this year, we plan on doing 221 lane miles.
So, roughly, if we did the math, 12?
13%.
13%?
Right.
Very good, because I think that's been long overdue, and, you know, one of the things that I know the council members here quite often is the concern from the citizens about how important the roads are in Lancaster. So, I applaud the fact that there's been some good listening by the staff, and we're going to take heed to that, and we can already see it now. I know the road crews have been out the last couple of weeks doing work, and I think that we're well on our way to taking care of, like you said, one of our greatest assets. So, thank you for that.
Can you go into the traction seal? How we can afford to do this now, but we couldn't afford to do it because traction seal is a better product at a cheaper price?
Yeah, that's well said. I think that initially, the vice mayor and then the mayor put us in touch with some of those folks. Essentially, it is a road product that is much better than any of the other surface road products. Better being it is much stronger, it's much easier to apply, and it makes a road, like in front of City Hall, for example, a road that would be degraded with water and stuff to last an additional seven years, as an example. One of the unique things we've been able to do through this council is this council entered an agreement with EcoStar to license the product, not just for us, but from Bakersfield to Phoenix to Las Vegas and all the way to the Mexican border, allowing us to produce it. We have a production plant that the council funded in last budget through the Air District. We've been able to get a grant for half the cost of that, and we can produce it on-site for much cheaper than we can buy it. That allows us to use it, first and foremost, on our roads and extend the amount of roads we can do on our own. As we start to sell it, and I digress for a moment, selling means that you have to have a city spec it, because as Ray said, contractors are going to put this down. The beauty of it is, any contractor can do it, as long as the city says, "We want this product or equal," they'll buy it from us, contractor will put it down. Right now, as we put it down on our roads, other cities are coming to see our roads, and as they see that happen, they're going to start specing it as well, too. But first and foremost, we produce it for a cheaper price through the license and through the plant that you guys authorized.
Can you go into a little bit, a lot of people ask why we do, like, say, 10th Street between G and H, why we were doing that without doing the roads internally, or the roads that they feel that are more necessary, that we're testing the products? Can you go into that a little bit?
You know, it's like performing on Broadway. You practice first. You don't want to start out without any kind of dress rehearsal. It's really to make sure that our crews understand it. For example, as we were first doing it, the nozzles on the spray truck were sticking too much, so it would stop and go, stop and go, and we determined it was a dilution issue and then having the nozzles open wider and such. So, as you do that, you get going, and as you get more in town, you're able to do a better job, a more efficient job, either our crews or the contractor.
Okay, let's go to public safety. We have the largest contract in LA County, correct?
I believe that is true.
How much are we adding to that contract this year?
The contract is the same component of deputies. We've added more in public safety and some other program areas, and the contract itself is increasing three-quarters of a million dollars, I believe, Barbara? Three-quarters of a million dollars between the liability trust fund and just the natural increase in the contract, which I think was three and a half or four? 2.8, thank you, Lee, sorry. Yes, it does maintain a lot, and just, that's a very good question. Lee and his staff have done an amazing job with the Sheriff's Department in really getting together and looking at how we deploy resources, because as I've said at the beginning, it's not just how much money you put towards it, it's how you use that money. And I would dare say that our city and our Sheriff's Department have one of the best relationships in all of LA County, of all the contract cities, in making sure that what they need, we give them, and that they make sure that the thing... what they need, we give them, and that they make sure that the things that are important to the city and the council and the citizens are met. So that's an undiscovered amount. We leverage it better because we have a really good staff that works with the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you.
As you implement Revive 25, is there a calendar that will be available to the community so that they will know exactly where it is that we're going to start first, then as we taper off with that?
That's correct. That's going to be part of the public outreach, and it's going to be essential for our success. So we anticipate having not only that achievable goal, that, you know, that percentage, we've done 12% this year, so, you know, some type of thermometer, maybe, or something that you can count to say, "Here's how we're achieving our goal." At the same token, is outreach, as it relates to what roads are going to be done, how we're doing them, as well as, as Ray talked about, the details of a road system. Oftentimes, people don't understand why, you know, they might ask, "Why did we do, you know, 10th between there? Why do we, you know, why did we do that street versus this street?" And hopefully, an understanding about each technique has a different purpose, where some roads, you might say, "That road's the worst road in town. Why aren't we doing that one first?" Well, it's the worst road in town. Doing anything to it other than reconstruction may not solve any problems. At the same token, if we focus on that, all the other streets become deteriorated. So we may need to do upgraded maintenance programs on better streets and reconstruction on others. So it's a communication effort to make sure that people understand what we're doing, why we're doing it, and then, of course, you know, how we're achieving our goals.
Thank you.
Are you also going to go into the different pots? It's my understanding that we have different federal funding that we can go from county funding, state funding, pots that we can go in, each road qualifies differently?
Yes, that's correct. We have a number of different transportation funds or funding sources that we can use for pavement maintenance. Each of them have different requires. So, for example, we have Proposition C funds that come through the MTA, through sales tax, and those can only be used on roads that are used primarily on bus routes. So you need to look at the, you know, okay, what's scheduled, and what percent, and use the money that way. So we leverage the different funding sources and their uses as best as we can to get as many miles as we can out of the funds we have available.
I brought that up because some people might not think that we need to do certain interchanges, let's say. So the Measure R funding that we received for the interchanges, we have to use that on 14, and those are the only components that we could use that money on. So it's a use-it-or-lose-it operation, correct?
That's correct. Those are actually funds that we receive specifically for those projects, and we don't have the discretion to take that money and then redirect it to another project.
Even though that we'd like to do all of Avenue M, we can only do a half a mile in either direction according to the Measure R funds?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, they're very specific.
So to add what Marvin said, I want to make sure that, from a marketing standpoint, that there's some clarity out there about, because I can just see this picture coming, you know, when somebody might rationalize and say, "Well, what was wrong with the Avenue M interchange? And I drive whatever street on a regular basis." You know, what is those silly politicians doing at City Hall again? Taking monies and, you know, again, I think tonight, there's some clarity in relationship to, it's a little bit of a puzzle sometimes in the things that we do today in relationship to fiscal management. It's not as maybe slam dunk as it was maybe eight, 10 years ago, before the state took some of our funding away. And I applaud the staff tonight in relationship to having a balanced budget, increasing the dollars in relationship to police protection, and then tackling the puzzle in relationship to the city's roads as just a couple of highlights. You know, again, I think that, you know, as historically, maybe when we came up to these budget periods, we didn't do enough to make sure that there's clarity about, you know, why we do things the way we do. And again, I feel elated that if the marketing goes correctly, people will understand why we do what we do. So thank you.
Want the good or the bad?
Bad first.
Well, if we're spending the most money on the contract studies with the Sheriff's Department, why aren't we the safest city in the county? And if we're giving them more money, how come the crime rate didn't go down more?
The simple answer to that is there's, that's but one factor of several factors.
My point is, we give the Sheriff's Department everything you want, everything you want. We've never said no. I want a better job. I want that crime rate going down. If there's something you don't have that you need, we'll figure out a way to get it. But at the end of the day, the regression stopped, and I know there's a lot of reasons for it, but I don't understand, if you have a city that's saying, "I'll give you whatever you want, just make it the safest city in the county." And I'm not the safest city in the county. My view of our role of supporting the Sheriff's Department is that we should support them in every need they have, but I'm not feeling the love back the way we used to. And I'm not going to say it quietly, or privately, or secretly. I'm saying it publicly. We give more to the Sheriff's Department than anybody. I don't understand the statistics. Fair enough? Talking to you, Pat. You got it? You're going to pass it on? Thank you.
Did we get the good too now?
You get the good stuff now.
I thought that was the... So Pat really got the bad stuff.
Well, I don't know if it's the bad stuff. I just want the understa, I just want it to be clearly understood that we will give them the tools to be absolutely excellent in what they do, but it requires excellence in return. All right? I mean, there isn't any other city that is as supportive as we are. Is there? Is there? Thank you. Barbara and Jason, what you have done with power is world-changing, and nobody knows it, and I don't know how to celebrate it. And I absolutely feel bad about it, because how often do people come along and create something that we know is going to change the world? And the way cities do power will never be the same because of you two and your staff. And you're unheralded, and I want you to know, I'm trying to figure out a way to fix that. And I'll get there. I just haven't been able to figure it out yet.
Make them sheriffs.
Thank you. Next year, we're going to be making money off of this. I mean, I literally see a day where the city revenues will not be dependent totally on taxes, and that is revolutionary. Thank you. You guys are doing a great job. I appreciate it. Oh, and is there anything we can do better for you?
Here's your chance, here's your chance.
Now it's your chance.
Be even better than you, if that's possible, than you guys are. No, in all seriousness, we've talked about slot. Council members lead communities, and people join winning teams. And we genuinely believe, in terms of not just here, but at AVT and all the boards we're in and everything, even at the LPAC event that we were at this weekend, seeing people give $100,000 to support the arts doesn't just happen because they have to. We just need to continue to be strong and take the hits and lead the community, and this council's always done that. And I would say, don't shy away from that because of what you never have, because of elections or because of anything else. We have an opportunity, the window's short, we just need to keep pushing everything right now, because it's going to end at some point. So continue and don't retreat.
No, it's not.
It will.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Michael Reeves. Don't you put a cloud on this, Michael.
Mayor Paris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. By the way, I had a speaker card for CC2, and I wanted to make some remarks, but I guess I didn't get to make them. But I do have some comments to make about the budget. I will be at the city manager's office to look it over before the next council meeting, so I want them to know that right off the back. I did review the preliminary budget, and one thing that concerned me was they're going to up the fees to certain offenses, or whatever you want to call them, that are committed in the city. The question I have now is the code enforcement, are the code enforcement people enforcing the codes in the city? So what's the point of increasing the fees if they're not enforcing the codes? So the question is, how many codes have been enforced in the year, and are we getting our money's worth? We mentioned public safety, and under the budget, they want to increase the fee for loud noise from $100 to $125. Loud noise in Lancaster is disgraceful. I remember last Saturday, somebody was playing their music all day long, and, you know, I took out my hearing aids and I could still hear it. And all the neighbors were gone, so I couldn't go to somebody's house and ask them where, you know, the music's coming from, so I had to endure that all day long. And I'm sure that other people in the city experience that, too. I mean, it's all right to play your music, but you do have to play it for the whole city can hear it. And I think that penalty for loud noise should not be $125. I think it should be $250 or higher. We mentioned the public safety in the budget. I'm not clear what improvement the Sheriff's Department can make, except that I wish that we'd have more motor officers on the street enforcing the vehicle codes in this city to drive around this town, and people do not make turn signals and do other kinds of offenses all day long. It just makes it horrible to drive in this town. I don't care if you pave every city, every street in this city. If people aren't driving correctly, people are not going to use the streets. I mean, it's just unbearable to drive in this town with the people who are violating the law constantly. So I'd like to see more motor officers on the street. So I'll have more comments on the budget after I review it. One last thing, I didn't get to talk on CC5, but Mark mentioned that we're going to have a medical city over in the next 10 or 15 years over there by the AV Hospital. Now, we need to fix the freeway off-ramp at 20th and J8 for people can get off the freeway so they can go to that medical center. Now, if you come up the 14 freeway now and you get off on Avenue K, it'll take you directly to the hospital, and that's perfect, because when they create that city, that would be a good way to get there. But if you're coming, you're going south, you have to go get off all around the hotels over there by where Carols is, and go back around. Over there at J8 and 20th, we should have an on and off ramp for people can get off, so when we get the medical center built, they'll be able to get to it promptly. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, let's close the public here and...
We have one more comment card.
I remember you. Hi, how are you?
Welcome back.
Thank you. Now, this is regarding PH1. I know we're talking about streets now. So, good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on behalf of the Building Industry Association, Los Angeles and Ventura Counties Chapter. The proposed fees that are before you today as far as development goes will have a major impact on developers. I'm sure that comes as no surprise. Development fees get passed down to the end user, the consumer, the resident of Lancaster. And when home prices are affordable, you have empty storefronts, higher rents, and residents' inability to move into homeownership. Increasing user fees will only exacerbate the situation. The proposed fee increases will have a major impact on affordability, pricing those interested in moving to Lancaster out of the homebuyer's market. In 2005, Lancaster's future was bright. Nearly 2,800 single-family homes or apartments were built with a total valuation of $517 million. This suburban community provided young, growing families who were priced out of the Los Angeles housing market with new affordable homes within commuting distance to the LA metro area, giving them a chance to grow, prosper, and move up the ranks into homeownership and a better life, the American dream. Unfortunately, the recession enacted a 1-2 punch, and the data tells the real story. For not only did new housing construction plummet to 187 houses by 2009, but many skilled workers, such as carpenters, general contractors, and electricians who lived and worked in the city, were now out of work, and total valuation plummeted to 2.8 million. Recent activity levels are at a mere 5.89% of what they were at peak levels in 2005, leaving many skilled workers underemployed or unemployed. Lancaster is proud of being voted number-one business-friendly city in Los Angeles County, but these fees are not friendly to our business. The building industry has barely begun to recover from the recession and continues to deal with major pressures to conserve water and provide additional mitigation. The product is this: homes that are top-of-the-line energy-efficient, water-efficient, drought-tolerant landscaping, with parks and schools built in the neighborhood. But increasing development fees will simply price builders out of the Lancaster market, leaving aging homes with enormous lawns and water-guzzling fixtures. So we ask council not to vote to approve, but instead, work with us to come back to the council with something more palatable. At this point, we suggest a deferment of these fees. As proposed, Phase 1 would go into effect September of 2015, and Phase 2, September 2016. The fees would be easier for our industry to absorb if we could see Phase 1 commence, let's say, June 2016, and Phase 2 in December 2016. A new plan would be easier to absorb and help us continue to build while helping the city achieve its goals. And as you consider this, please also keep in mind that new housing is part of California's water solution, water crisis. Newly constructive homes are twice as efficient as homes built in the 1980s due to energy-saving and water-efficient devices, and every new home built today generates approximately three new jobs, boosting your local economy. So thank you for your consideration.
Any questions? Not so fast. What, are they going up substantially, or...
I'd let Barbara do the details of that, but no, they're still lower than the competitors around us, and we have worked with BIA, we did notify them, we have done building incentive programs, which we continue to do. But I'd like Barbara to give some details if you don't mind.
No, I'm okay. I just want to get the overall. You know, the, when Lancaster's future was bright in 2005, and we were building all of those thousands of homes for the American dream, weren't we really building them for people to, for speculators to buy and rent out? And weren't we really building them for Section 8? Isn't that really what happened?
I would probably ask what the vacancy rate of those homes are now.
Well, I'm sure, what is the vacancy rate?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I know there's substantial in pockets.
I'm sorry, what?
There is vacancies in certain pockets and neighborhoods. I just don't know.
How is that different than the rest of the county?
There is really a housing crisis in all of California.
So if we build more homes, is that going to make the vacancy rate lower?
When you build more homes, you actually increase the supply and therefore decrease the demand. Right now, you have a very high demand, but a very short supply. So housing...
Could I have a high vacancy rate? How could I have a high demand and a short supply? That makes no sense.
No, right now, you have a high, I don't know what the rates are. I don't know how many homes are available right now. But I do know that in California, in every county in Southern California, Los Angeles County, Ventura County, and pretty much throughout the state, there is an affordability crisis. This is the first time in 20 years that... This is the first time in 20 years that California has a net zero as far as population growth, meaning that there are just as many people leaving the state as entering the state. And it's because people are priced out of the homebuyers market.
Wait a minute, there is no evidence to support that. The reason people are leaving is they're to get jobs.
No, the reason people are leaving is because people can't afford to be here, because they can't.
Because they don't have a job. That really makes no sense, to me, anyway.
I am very happy to follow up with you with statistics that we have that show that...
But a correlation is not a causation. And what you're presenting to us is just correlations.
There have been many, many studies that have shown that there is indeed a housing crisis in California.
Okay, well, I don't...
There are not nearly enough houses.
First of all, I don't know how you define a housing crisis. To me, a housing crisis is what we've experienced in the last 10 years up here, which is an abundance of housing, which invited all kinds of problems. You know, when we were being told that we were building homes for single families to own, while we were being told that, what the industry knew is that, what was it, 70% of the homes were being bought by investors to rent out. It just seems to me we could have a much better relationship if we actually were more candid in what the problems and the solutions are. It also seems to me if we have an abundance of housing that's vacant, why don't we raise the rates until those houses get filled up? And then lower them to promote building.
Well, I would, I don't think that we have...
Why wouldn't we do that?
I don't think that we have a whole lot of houses that are available right now. We have people living in cramped quarters. We have college graduates returning from college who cannot afford their own place to live because they can't afford it.
Yeah, I got two realtors here. And these guys are really good realtors.
Yeah.
Help me out here. Am I missing something?
Age will speak before youth, I guess.
Well, I prefer wisdom.
I think I'm fresh out of that environment. You know, I have not studied your budget, and I had an opportunity to glance through it. I did not really look at the, spend any time on development fees and how they're, you know, how they're spread. You're talking about new home construction, a very narrow segment of the housing market. That's really all we're focusing on here. And for all intents and purposes, there is no new home construction in our community, likely not to happen for some period of time because there are, because there are no developable lots in the community that are priced economically to generate new home construction, whether it be moderately priced or any other price. That's my opinion. So frankly, the argument about a fee structure that's going up slightly doesn't hold much water, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
I have to agree, Mr. Mayor, with Mr. Voss, as far as the lots, that's one of the biggest issues that any developer has up here, is finding those lots at affordable pricing, and then put all the factors into it. And we got to remember, too, one of the things, too, is that a lot of this stuff has happened over the period of time where a lot of builders and a lot of the financing that took place back then, years ago, has affected us to this date now. And by looking at the record that we have before us, we've, I don't think it's a bit as far as a lack of inventory, because the inventory's there. It's been extremely incredible for the investor, who has invested and has gathered homes, and the rental market has been strong. I think it's that, those ones, those buyers that have now gone and recycled to the point that can't afford it or can't qualify, and those are big issues, too. And, like you said, Mr. Mayor, as far as jobs, you know, it all circles around jobs. What do we have up here? So I don't think, like Mr. Voss says, it's incremental increases as far as fees, that's not it. It's the affordability of the land that can be done up here. Water's an issue. You know, will serve letters, all that comes into effect, too.
I just think we could have a much better relationship with the building industry than we do in regards to collectively working on mutual problems and finding solutions that nobody's found before. I don't want the building industry coming up here and building rental houses. And if they continue to do so, we will, they will see a different environment. But if the building industry were to actually work with us and figure out a way to build homes that were going to be purchased by families who were going to live in them, you would find a much more receptive staff that would, and I don't see us developing any procedures to make that happen. What I see is the building industry coming and saying, "We want lower fees," and you get all these good things if you do. And, you know, that worked for a while. I mean, what did we know? We know a lot more now. And at least in regards to Lancaster, what business-friendly means to us is that we work together to find mutual goals that improve the well-being of the city, not the well-being of people who live someplace else's checking account. Okay? And I would just suggest to you, you might go back to the people you work with and say, "Let's get a little more inventive and a little more creative," and you might find a different environment that would actually be more creative.
If I could address, actually, what you said, I don't believe that the builders that you're not happy with, who build rental homes, those are not our builders. Our builders are building single-family homes, and we have two builders that are here now, our members, too, that are left in Lancaster that are still building single-family homes. But that's all we have. I can't speak for anyone else who's not members. I don't know what rental units are being built. They're not our members.
Sample, sample the two major builders up here, KB and who's the other one?
Richmond American.
Sample them, find out how many homes are actually, the people living in them own them. And give me a analysis later, but I want a valid sample and a valid analysis so that we're not just talking about what we hear, neither you nor me. All right?
I would like you to know that even an incremental fee increase, it's really not a petty request. I don't want you to believe that it's a petty request, because when you look at the bigger picture...
I don't think it is either, but I think you're talking about things that I'm not interested in. I'm not interested in, the only jobs we have up here is the building industry, because we saw what happens when that occurs. When the building industry stops, all those people have to move, because they had temporary jobs, essentially. They didn't have permanent jobs. There's a lot we could be paying attention to in how we work together that we don't. It's not, I don't think it's our place to keep the building fees as low as possible to get more of the same. What KB found is that when they give us something different, they get a lot lower fees. When they give us energy-efficient homes, when they give us water-efficient homes, when they do something totally creative that's never been done before, they pay less than they pay anywhere else.
Right.
I would like to see that with the whole industry, not just one developer.
Right.
Okay?
Mr. Mayor, I think you touched on a really good subject. I think staff has been pretty sympathetic to meeting your request and the council's request in the past, because we have given incentives on fees the last three or four years when they've come to us and proposed building smart homes. And showing that as a leadership body here, working with staff, I think we've done a fairly good job about keeping that door open and getting a better quality product and creating that workability with the builders. So I have a different perspective.
Mark, during the downturn, didn't we reduce the builders' fees by 25%?
Yeah, and we've been doing that for three years. We reduced them. We targeted those reductions, and then we've worked with the building association and the builders every step of the way, and came up with the better-built homes to get it what the mayor was talking out, which is incentivize the things we want. So yeah, I'm very proud of what our staff's done and what our council's done in working with the building community.
So Christine, didn't your builders take our model of reducing it by 25% and take it to other cities and saying, "Because of what we did here, it improved building homes and the ability to prove homes"? I know Riverside implemented it. I know Palmdale implemented it on what we did here. Isn't that true?
I am not certain about that, but what I can tell you is that the typical homebuyer, when they purchase a home today, 40% of their sticker price is user fees. 40% is user fees, and that Lancaster has just not rebounded fully.
If we made it 20%, what evidence is there we're going to rebound?
You're just increasing affordability.
If we just waived all the fees?
You're only increasing affordability.
But there's no evidence to support what you're saying. I mean, yeah, okay, we make the house cheaper. I don't know, I mean, I think it's much more complex than that. And all I'm suggesting to you is that, you know, let's recognize it's a very complex issue and treat it like a complex issue, and have different alternatives. I mean, I don't know why there's one fee structure if we want different things, you know? And you guys know more about this than we do.
Of course. It is a complex issue. We absolutely acknowledge that.
If a builder came to us with a safer design, meaning a safer neighborhood, you designed it this way, you're going to have less crime, we'd probably lower the fees. And it seems to me that your association should be promoting that sort of thing. I don't know why it has to be the same fee for everybody for the same thing. I don't want the same thing. I want something better. Do you get it?
And we're very proud of what KB, one of our members, have put forth and how they've worked with the city to create this new home. That's definitely excellent. And we certainly do appreciate the city working with us as well.
Thank you. Look forward to you next time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You already closed the public hearing?
That's right. Okay.
I'll make a motion. We receive and file PH1.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, I have to direct staff to... That's a little unorthodox.
Customer service.
Directing staff to schedule the budget adoption and fee schedule for June 23, 2015.
Did we get a declaration on that vote?
Yeah, it was unanimous.
Okay.
New business, streetlight acquisition.
No speaker cards?
I want to hear about it, anyway. Because this is really cool.
I think I need to grow a couple inches. Good evening, Mayor and council. I'd like to give you a short update on where we are with our streetlight acquisition. Pursuant to council authorization, the city is in the process of acquiring the streetlights currently owned by Southern California Edison. It's been a several-year project, and we're finally in the final phases. We're in the process of purchasing approximately 18,000 streetlights from Southern California Edison, which is about 90% of the streetlights in the city. Benefits of ownership include lower monthly costs, energy efficiency opportunities, and opportunities for new uses of the asset. In April of 2015, Southern California Edison filed the application with the Public Utilities Commission for approval. Currently, it's scheduled to have final PUC decision in August of 2015. However, this date is fairly fluid, as there are many factors that could impact that date. Once approved, Edison and Lancaster will work to transition the streetlights in phases over 18 months. At this point, the most cost-effective method to finance the acquisition is through a tax-exempt bond financing with payments to be paid from the existing streetlight annexation, or, I'm sorry, streetlight assessment. So we'll be able to purchase the lights, finance them, and pay for it with the current assessment, which currently doesn't cover the costs, and save money within that district. We will also be able to, over time, look at things such as LED retrofit, or there's a number of different uses we could do with those lights. And I see your wheels spinning. But it's an exciting project. It's been several years we've been talking about it, but it looks like over the next six months, it will actually come to fruition, and we'll begin acquiring those from Edison. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
When's the target to replace all of them with LED?
The first target is obviously to get them. We're already in discussions with a variety of people, looking at the business model component of LED. As soon as, and as Barbara points out, there's a complexity, and now there were also the energy company as well, too. So we have to look at that component. But if all goes well, we should have a plan in place by the time we get the lights, and then it's implementing it.
You didn't give me a date.
Within 18 months, and we'll narrow that down for you.
Okay.
Part of it's just a little bit more research to make sure it's a good business decision, too.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Barbara.
You're welcome.
Why does the PUC have to agree to this? I don't get that.
Because the assets are lined by, I'm sorry, the assets are, the lights are assets that are owned by the Southern California Edison, and any activities they undertake that could potentially affect rates or affects their financing would require CPUC approval. It's part of, that's their governing body. For Lancaster Choice Energy, these types of things would be decided upon with the council.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? Thank you. Any communications?
No communications.
Any speaker cards?
No. But I want to hear it, anyway.
Okay. How you doing, sir? Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris, council members and commissioners. I just want to reintroduce you to a program that we initiated in the spirit of our community partnerships here at the city with Antelope Valley High School. It's a collaborative working group between the sheriff's department, the high school district, the school campus, and some mentoring programs that we've initiated at the school. So I'm going to bring Brett DeRico, vice principal from AV High School here forward, Nigel Holly, who's also involved in the project at the school, working through a grant program, John Keith, who's also a member, and Jennifer Priscaro from our staff. But Brett will bring you through it, and then we'll jump in here when it's appropriate.
Do you guys know each other?
Yeah, this is my son, who's about to be a father again, and we've been sitting here checking the phone here for...
Yes, like do today. So, yes, my name's Brett DeRico. I'm a vice principal at Antelope Valley. I just want to thank you, first off, for letting us present today and update you. We came forward with an idea back in, I want to say September is when we rolled it out, and we presented to you guys, I think, late September, early October, on kind of what we were planning, what was coming, and how we wanted to roll this program out, and what impact it will have on both students and community. So it is a partnership between the city of Lancaster and AVHS, and hopefully, we want to grow it and expand it to various school sites within the district. It's a very proactive model. Currently, in the state of California, the model for truancy, or for school attendance, is very punitive. It's after so many absences, it's a fine. After so many absences, it's a fine. After so many absences, it's a fine, and then a DA filing. So we wanted to add layers of intervention to, you know, peel back the layers of the onion and look at, you know, what's the real issue going on? Why is the student missing school? I was a teacher, as well as a counselor, at Antelope Valley High School before I became an administrator, and when I was a counselor, I saw a deeper need there. There's some underlying issue going on that's causing the student to miss school. So we wanted to add layers of intervention to help prevent that. So what we offer at AV, you guys saw earlier that we did have the Green Academy come and update you a little bit with S-Power, but we also offer a lot of other programs at the school site. We have the African-American Male Initiative, as well as the African-American Female Initiative. I actually oversee athletics, and I have a rigorous academic, or athletic academic intervention, where every student goes to tutoring an hour a day per athletics. So we have a lot of tiers of intervention in place at the school site, but if the student's not at school, they can't access any of those programs. So that's the philosophy behind why we saw this as a need. And you'll also see the truancy rate. 3% of our population accounts for 18% of truancy, which is a huge number when you're looking at... And schools are funded based on enrollment. So we build our programs at the school site based on how many students are enrolled. Well, if the students aren't coming to school, then the school isn't being paid whole for that, the district's not being paid whole, and also the student is not able to access the programs that we have in place. So back in September is when we talked about what we wanted to roll out. Well, it's exciting today because we've had a year, it's been a very fluid year. It's been a lot of development and I can't wait to start at the beginning of next year just rolling it from day one, as well as having some of our AVEA staff work with families over the summer to really take a proactive approach to attendance. This is our flow chart we have on campus. I know, can't really see it that well, but it basically has students that are monitor status, which means that they just check in with our staff. We have, if they're actually enrolled in the AVEA program, and I'll touch base on a little bit of what that monitoring is on a few slides. And then also the noncompliance. So what layers of intervention do we add if students and families are not getting their children to school? So again, it was a very fluid approach this year. We had a philosophy, we had an idea, and we wanted to build it, and that's what we've done. So we actually have John, Nigel, and Jen actually go physically and check classrooms. They have a caseload of students and they physically check to see if the kid's in the seat every day. And then the students report to them and we do an hour of tutoring and an hour of mentoring, which Nigel's going to touch base on in a few moments, two times a week. So they're actually enrolled in the program. There's a lot of life coaching involved as well as counseling, as well as tutoring because there's a huge academic component to this as well. We do home visits. We keep a lot of data with, via Google Doc, enrollment, what interventions are we putting in place as a school site through this program? And then what we plan on doing this summer is visiting families and looking at previous year of attendance and making, again, we want to catch them day one and get them involved and make sure that they're attending school. And Nigel, if you want to come up and give a little info on what the mentoring and pathway model is.
Mayor, Council. The mentoring portion is more or less to, more or less focused on changing the student's paradigm. Each student has a different reason for why they may be truing. No two situations we've learned are the same. One could be a situation to where the student is actually at home babysitting while mom or dad goes to work and mom and dad can't afford, you know, to pay for a babysitter or daycare. So no two situations are alike. So our focus is to change that student's paradigm. How we do that is a four-pronged approach. First, we get the student to understand their current reality, understand where they're at, what their situation is, why they're not coming to school. The second approach is, once we get them to understand their current reality, is for them to build or develop a compelling future or vision. We give them something to strive for. Some students, it's something as simple as making it to every class for one week on time. Some, it's a greater or a deeper need, they want to graduate. Once we develop that and understand where they want and help them to accomplish a vision for themselves, then we help them write out an action plan. We take the time out and show them the steps that it takes for them to get there. We show them where they were at from their reality to what they want, and then we show them how to get there. The last step in this approach is evaluation and follow-up. We have the students look at where they're at, look at how much growth they've had over the time they've been enrolled in the program, and then we start them over again in the life coaching cycle. And it seems to be very effective because the students now actually have a clear vision or a clear path of where they want to go. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, this year was fluid. We're building, as I've repeated several times, I'm sure. But these are some of the partnerships we've developed this year. So where this started from is we went through WASC last year. I was an administrator that was within that process and we saw this need of attendance. And from there, it's grown into this almost, I think of a tree growing in a sense, you know? But we, this is some of the partnerships we have developed and we've met with these various organizations and it's been an interesting but also very, what's the right word to say, appetizing experience for students. So we've met with Department of Probation. There's a 236, which is a voluntary probation program. So that's one of those layers we want to add where we can have parents access the Department of Probation and work directly with the probation officer at the school site. And then there's also the formalized process of probation. We've also worked diligently with LA County Superior Court. In fact, I believe Judge Wesley came and presented to the Crime Commission a few weeks back, as well as we've been working with some of our local judges. And we've actually implemented a teen court, which is very exciting, at Antelope Valley High School, which is something that we grew and I'll get into that in a few slides as well. And we're actually sending some students down who are sit on as a jury panel to the Shades Program, which is a specific program with LA County where they get trained at the Museum of Tolerance. And then we also have the California Youth Summit, which is another jury law type of program where students learn a lot about law. So again, it started as some, a little issue, which has grown into fruitation into various different ways. We've also partnered with the Antelope Valley Youth Court here at the city, which is one of our referral programs, and also the Paving the Way Foundation for Mental and Health Services. Future partnerships, so local nonprofits. In fact, we'll be meeting this summer with some various organizations like the Boys and Girls Club, as well as Mental Health of America, to look to refer out into the city when we see a need for students and families. So again, it's adding layers of intervention and layers of support for families to address whatever that need is that's causing them to not come to school. Also teen court partnership with RX Paris Law Firm. So thank you, sir. But we are sending some students down to the California Youth Summit, as well as the Shades Program through the city and through this partnership organization to help support these students learn law and really just develop as individuals. And then also collaboration with local district attorney's office. So this is something that's very exciting. On 5/13/15, we did roll out the teen court, which we actually have local students sit on as juries or jurors and actually see students their age who have committed certain crimes or offenses within the community. And we've seen a lot of positive results because of that. Also, we will be, like I stated, we will be sending kids down to the Shades Training as well as the Museum of Tolerance. Do you want to hit on?
Yeah, I think the thing that's important about, especially the teen court aspect, you know, we've talked in the past to the council as well as the Crime Commission and we discuss all the time the amount of actual juvenile delinquency that involves certain behavior that's a delinquency and some bordering on criminal and especially for first-time or second-time offenders. And having the ability to process those individuals and as we've spoken in the past, we have one hearing officer for the entire Los Angeles County and they're probably behind over 20,000 citations as it relates to that, different issues that occur in our community. The biggest part of that is we all want to work in that restorative justice-type model. And I think what we really discuss as a group and more through the mayor's working group and what we've discussed through the Crime Commission and here in the council meetings is the proactive approach to really getting down to what's going on with these kids before they take that first bite of the apple and go down a path that's not going to be productive for them. And I think we're learned through this process what works, what doesn't work. I think what's been great is through the support of Mayor Paris's office, as well as bringing Judge Wesley into the picture and going back to the original model back of the teen court that he was actually the developer for and introducing that in the high school. So the interesting component of this is we have a child that was once a defendant in one of these cases is now a juror. And it's interesting to watch as we watched with this first teen court, I think it's an eye-opener on how much harder the peers are, you know, their own peers are on them and their expectation. Another thing we're developing through this process that Nigel has been meeting with the district attorney's office is developing a parental responsibility aspect that designs conditions through a hearing process so that we have the parents actively involved in this process as well and requiring it. So they're also going to be a partner. And again, the beauty of being partnered here with the city is we have the access to organizations that provide services. And usually based on our involvement and how active this city council and city is with those organizations, we can garner those resources from those agencies out there. And so like Nigel talked about, childcare, you know, we can definitely make that collaboration with Los Angeles County through CCRC to develop a program for that, those parents to have childcare where that student can go to school. And we've had simple things as kids just not having the ability to have their clothes clean and they were embarrassed to come to school and that was part of their issue. So it's been an interesting program so far. I think we're really excited about the direction we're going. And again, with the, with working with the high school board, we want to develop this program into the other high schools. Right now, as far as teen court's concerned, our hope is by the end of the next school year that we will have a teen court in each of the high schools in Lancaster so we can help process with some of that backlog of citations that exist to deal with those issues.
Thank you. So results. If the student's compliant, which means they come in, they take ownership, they recognize, you know, yes, I have not been attending school, yes, I, in lieu of a truancy ticket, I can participate in this program and go through this cycle and really change, we're seeing very good results, 10 to 45%, depending on the student, which is astounding. You have students who go from straight Fs to now passing classes. We've had several cases of students turning it around that semester and all As and Bs. I mean, so they're just really taking ownership of school and attendance and being proactive and where they're going in the future, which is the whole goal of the program. It's not to be punitive, it's simply to add layers of intervention and support. If noncompliant, though, and this is where on that flow chart, it's kind of that bottom tier, this is where we've developed a lot of formalization throughout this school year and developed partnerships with various organizations. But typically what would happen in the state of California is they get the absent phone call, the truancy letter, the SAR contract, and then from there, after so many absences, they go to the SAR panel, which is the School Attendance Review Board. And again, they have 4,500 citations every month going down to, through the Department of Probation, and they're just very backlogged. So we wanted to localize things and add tiers of intervention and support in place. So that's why we have the AVEA and it's a layer of intervention. And then we start, just like the processes that I just went over with you through the program, that's what we do with those students. And then from there, if they're noncompliant, then we'll start becoming more progressive. And that's where we refer to youth court and then teen court. And then at the end of the road is that DA file after we've exhausted every single intervention we have. And the vision, again, is not to be punitive. It's simply to have students gain access to programs that we offer at the school site. I think that we've done a lot of work as a district, in particular, Antelope Valley High School, going through the turnaround model, adding programs and looking at the needs of our students to help students develop and take ownership of themselves, but also get access to our programs at school. So we wanted, the whole vision behind it was adding layers of intervention to help support these students. But it also helps the community as a whole, referring to nonprofits when, within the community so they have, so our students and families can access those various organizations. The crime rate as far as daytime burglary, which I don't know if you would like to...
Yeah, I'll just copy and talk about that. Like as mentioned earlier in the budget briefing, burglary is down. I can tell you that just looking at, in the reporting districts that service this school based on the boundaries, that our numbers are down. And so obviously, and as you all well know, daytime truancy, there's many studies that show that has a direct correlation to daytime crime, daytime burglary rates and such. So with the hard work of Pat's folks at the station, the burglary suppression team, and then working proactively in this model, we've seen the result of that specifically in the areas as it relates to this school.
And then, of course, the number one thing is students and families. So making sure the students are having access to our programs at the school site. So the positives is they'll have an opportunity to gain access, increase involvement, gives community a support system. It also helps formalize the SAR process if it does go that direction and it has to be progressive, but we're finding that a lot of students are catching somewhere within the nets that we're adding. And then it's very proactive and the number one thing here is localization. We're not just referring down to county and it's just getting backlogged and backlogged and backlogged. We're developing partnerships here within our own community and addressing these issues as a whole. Any questions?
Mr. Little, any questions?
Just that I had the privilege to, like I spoke at last meeting, I'm Mr. Mayor, Judge Wesley that Mr. DeRico brought, and it's astonishing to me that the records of children or students or kids in the community that are not attending school. And then the figures that Lee that you brought to the table, the, and I have my notes, I just happened to look at my notes from that meeting, is that 82% of high school dropouts do a certain amount of crimes in our local community. Keeping the kids in school should be a priority. I mean, and Mr. Mayor, you directed us to look at the Shades Program, the Teen Court, and from what Judge Wesley had presented to us that the criminal justice was phenomenal. I mean, it really opens your eyes to sit there and say, and looking at the peers, judging them and bringing down the sentences and makes them all sit there interactive again. And it's amazing. So I relish to the point of what we can do as a commission to help them constantly. And thank goodness, Mr. DeRico, Lee DeRico and Brett, and keeps our, like I said, keeps our feet to the fire, including you, Mr. Mayor. So, thank you, Council.
Thank you. Mr. Rose, anything? Mr. Mann, anything? Anything? Vice Mayor?
You might want to be aware that they have a free Christian legal aid to help your students.
Great.
At Grace Resources on June 13th.
Okay.
So just something to add to your portfolio.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Is this the thing that grew out of the working group?
Yes, yes, sir. Yeah, it was something that Brett and I had discussed from the year before, just based on a study he had done with the district on attendance at AV High School. That was part of, you know, implementation on the school site and what they were doing. And we brought that to the working group and that's where Nigel and the working group put together a program as far as the mentoring aspect and putting those tools together. And that's something we're applying, you know, that this has led into that collaboration with the district attorney's office and everybody getting on the same page here. And what's really worked for us is probation's now really starting to step up to the plate based on these issues as it relates to juvenile delinquency and responsibility.
For those of you who don't know, the working group is what evolved out of the Section 8 litigation with the HUD department or the threatened litigation. And look what it's accomplished. It was focusing on the positive things we can do instead of what their Justice Department is trying to focus on now, whatever that is. This is a huge thing. I really appreciate it. We may want to explore the idea of making it a community goal and with the actual measurable number of reduction in truancy that we can measure, you know, almost like that thermometer thing again.
Yes, definitely.
We, I would like staff to explore the possibility of using the neighborhood impact homes, maybe, you know, giving a huge prize to the neighborhood that has the greatest reduction. That would involve working with the school district, figuring out a way around the privacy issues in order to measure it. And I think we can do that just by keeping it anonymous, but by zip code or...
Definitely.
By street.
School tone.
But that really should be our primary goal right now is to, is to improve the truancy issue. And you guys are taking a huge step in that direction. I am just thrilled with this. And you did a pretty good job on him, Lee. I mean, that's a great...
My fault. Thank goodness you took that.
You got to be really proud of him.
Mark and Constance, these two, they get in, I can't even get in the car with these two and they bag on me the entire way to something. So...
You know, just take the compliment, Lee. Please, just take the compliment. You were a good dad. You did a good job. You produced something.
He is a good dad and...
It was all him.
And there is a stark difference. Thank you. Thank you, Nigel.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, sir.
And if I were you, I'd go find my wife and be with her.
Yeah.
Okay, where are we?
CR1.
Council Agenda 1.
Well, we've already done that. Haven't we already declared...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, there's nothing, nothing new to report and I have a meeting. My next meeting is next week on Thursday.
Okay, good. You lower our fees yet?
Yeah, in the fall on the tax bill. They're going down.
Well, Michael Reeves has something to say to you.
Oh.
Mayor Paris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I just want the public to be aware that the representatives that we've had on the 14th sanitation district, it was Councilman Smith and now it's Councilman Mann, have consistently voted not to increase the rates for the taxpayers. It was the county and the representative from Palmdale that are consistently voting to increase the rates. In fact, the representative from, one of the representatives... In fact, the representative from, one of the representatives, ex-representatives from Palmdale, increased the rates in his sanitation district, the Twentieth. So, I commend Councilman Mann...
Who is that?
Oh, I won't mention the mayor's name, but we know who he is. I commend Councilman Mann also for trying to reduce the, the rates further. But there could be a silver lining with the edicts by the Fortieth Water Works District. They're, they're going to demand that we reduce our water. So that would make it easier for people to apply for rebates at the end of the year from the sanitation district, because it's based on your water usage. So there could be a silver lining in this, if Councilman Mann pursues further reductions, and also people in this room may be able to apply for rebates. And they're not that really difficult to get, you just have to be below a certain level. And the public can contact the Los Angeles County Sanitation District on the internet or on the phone book for more information about rebates. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other council reports? Okay. What's happening with the senior rates on the buses? Did we, did we...
Speaking of the, the next thing...
Did we fix that yet?
Mayor, I just wanted, both myself and the Vice Mayor, we spent a little bit of time after our last meeting talking about what are some of the opportunities to, to be able to get those senior rates down. And sometimes there's value sitting on multiple jurisdictions, and we tasked the, the staff over at AQMD to do, we did a little bit of homework and found out in the city of Riverside, they had used AB2766 funds to be able to...
Did we get the rates down?
To backfill. And I think we've got a solution to getting the rates down.
Good. Means free, they ride for free.
That's the goal. I think we've got the workout for it.
And did those evil people from that other place vote, agree with that?
I don't know. Marvin, you, you were there on that one.
We haven't voted on it yet. It's a, we'll do a grant from the AVA-QMD. The AVA-QMD will give a grant to the city, and the city will have a program that will be administered by the AVTA. So they will give us, AVA-QMD will give us a grant for fifty thousand dollars. We'll match it with our Prop A money. We will have a hundred thousand dollars that we can pay AVTA. AVTA will give us the opportunity to administer that through them, and the seniors will ride for free. All three jurisdictions will have that opportunity. The jurisdiction of Palmdale and Los Angeles County will have that opportunity too. And working on it today, we also, working with that same logic, the AVA-QMD will give grants to the college, and they'll match the funds, and we'll have a special bus route from the Palmdale campus to the Lancaster campus, back and forth. Right now, they have to take three buses interchange to get from one campus to the other. By doing it this way, we'll be able to do a straight shot, and it'll, it'll be cheaper for the students. With three transfers, that's the fastest way that they can do it. With three transfers, it costs them approximately ten dollars a day. Through doing it this way, we'll cut that in half. So, we're helping our students, we're helping everything, and it's working with great council people. Work with Angela on the AVTA, and she was very supportive of making this happen for the seniors. So, we're going to propose it next Tuesday at the AVA-QMD, and after that, if that passes there, then we're going to go towards the AVTA and have them implement the plan. Mark was working on the city of Lancaster's plan for what we're doing here. So, it's a three-pronged method to do in it, but it, we had all the attorneys in there, and they said that it was all legal. One of them said that we found someone to buy our beer for us. It was circumventing the system. I won't say which attorney said that.
Okay.
So, creative way to answer your question, it's yes.
Interesting choice of metaphor, Allison. It really was. It did get our attention, but it is. There's probably a better metaphor, don't you think?
But, talking with, about the AVA-QMD, some of the things that they've done, we have bought or repurposed a hundred and seventeen different buses in the last couple of years, from all the different school districts to the private schools. So we've done that with different funds from the AVA-QMD, but there's a hundred and seventeen school buses out there that have been purchased or refitted by the AVA-QMD, so...
We still have funding for that?
Yes.
Yes, that's ongoing.
Can we talk to the college?
I have not.
My, my understanding is the college has some old polluting buses they could use some help with.
Okay.
Okay, we can tackle that.
We have special funds that, that we can do that, nine twenty-three. One last thing, are you done, Ken?
Yeah, I'm fine.
We did meet with the county, we met with Norm Hickling, we met with Senator Runner's office, we met with Assembly Lackey's office in regards to Cal Water. Me and the city manager went over there and we asked them, or it was a joint effort to get them to implement legislation to roll back some of the Cal Water rates, or at least to say that if there's water available across the street or close enough to it, that's ten percent or less, you'll be able to make that choice. So, there's different legislation that Senator Runner or Assembly Lackey were going to do, but the county and us, we put everybody together in the same room, and we're still working on the Cal Water issue. So, we didn't think it's quite fair for what they, they have a RAM charge, is what they call it, and the, by saving, it's mandated by the state that you have to save water. And by saving the water, they're going to charge them about twenty-five percent more through this RAM charge. So it's not quite fair, and those people are really getting the shaft, so...
Do we have subpoena power?
In the context of pending litigation, yes. And in the course of certain types of enforcement action, yes.
What about a hearing?
For what?
What about a hearing?
No.
I want you to figure out a way to help those people.
Okay.
I don't care what you have to do, but we've tried to work with Cal Water now for two years, and these people are getting totally... You're good with metaphors.
I liked the Vice Mayor's metaphor.
I didn't spill the coffee.
You got, you understand what I'm saying?
I do, yes.
I mean, it, it's almost reaching an emergency level. These people are running out of money, they, all they want to do is drink water. I mean, for heaven's sakes, they're getting so ripped off. Maybe raped is the word. I mean, what they're doing to these families because of the water rate is just beyond the pale of what we should tolerate. So figure out a way to stop it.
Okay.
All right? Make that a priority. Maybe Cal Water could use that in their commercials, how they're raping the people of Lancaster. I know what I'm doing. I know exactly what I'm doing.
Okay. All right.
And just to back that up, I don't think it's just all Cal Water. I think it's the Office of Taxpayer Advocates. They nullified an agreement that we had with Cal Water, and we had an agreement with Cal Water for less than ten percent increase. The people that are supposed to be the advocates for the taxpayers said, no, you can't have a ten percent increase, which is reasonable, it has to be thirty-five percent. So, I think, and these people are in the offices right across from each other, and it's just, I don't think they're doing a very good job being advocates for our taxpayers.
You know, something as basic as water, and we're a city, we, and we have no control of this, this is beyond my comprehension. And, and I think we have to do something totally off the charts to, to seize control of that water and administer it in a fair fashion. I mean, what is the nature of a city but other than to give their residents water? I mean, isn't that where you start? And we have no ability to do that? Allison works some magic. Why'd you go to law school if not for that? Thank you. Right?
I agree. I agree. Something has to be done.
Are we in a fight in purpose in that?
Right.
That we, we have to figure out a way for Lancaster to take over the water our people are drinking. And that should be a priority of how we have to do it.
Right.
And if we have to start suing people, we're pretty good at that. Well, I am, anyway. Let's figure out a way to do it. Thanks. Anything else? Okay. Housing Authority, no action. Financing Authority, no action. Power Authority, no action. Successor Agency, no action. City Manager.
Just a couple of announcements. I hope the council appreciates, we tried to add a couple of things to each agenda as updates like we did today. The reason for that is we highlight certain programs and agendas and overhear and stuff, but there are so many programs that this community, this staff, and the community itself is doing, that we've tried to add over the last several months, just a couple of updates on each meeting. And it's, it's truly remarkable, and it's not just the city proper as an organization. The community is really engaged and really working hard to improve it. We had the opportunity to go to the Mayor's Health and Wellness Academy kickoff on Friday night. And the school district is letting this program go into three of their schools, the kindergarten, to improve the health and wellness of those. But through Kelvin's efforts and our AmeriCorVistas, they've also gotten AV Partners for Health, High Desert Medical, Antelope Valley, and Kaiser, did I miss one? AV Hospital, to contribute twenty thousand dollars each towards this program. That's a remarkable program, and the, the excitement there was tremendous. I thanked the mayor for keynoting that with Michelle Bauer. And then, we also on Saturday had an event where the community came together and contributed over one hundred and five thousand dollars towards the LPAC Foundation, towards the arts. And that all goes towards getting, I think it's over twenty thousand children to go experience the performing arts. And those are just but two examples, and I think we're represented almost by the whole council between those two events. So really, thank you. And when you asked that question earlier, that's what we're talking about, engagement, leadership, getting the community to step up too. So it's been really great. The only other announcement I have is that Paraclete High School, their softball team won the CIF championship for the first time in school history. Coach Margaret Neal's been coaching for thirty-seven years and was oh and seven in the championship game, and finally won, and we will be honoring them at a future council meeting.
Is your name going to be on the plaque again?
There's a distinct possibility, since it's already been ordered. I made sure it was ordered before I made that announcement, yes.
Just so the mayor knows that he makes comments later that he has more plaques than any other athlete at Paraclete High School.
From the class of nineteen seventy-six, and my name is in the trophy case more than anyone else.
That is really ugly, Mark.
It's ugly but true.
Could we get a group rate on therapy? Okay, that being said, we have some speaker cards. City Clerk?
This is the time to address the City Council Agency and Authority on Non-Agendized Matters. Please complete a speaker card, which can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Before I start, I want to tell everybody a story about somebody in the city. It's Jack Mellor. I've known him my whole life. Well, since I was eighteen, but when you're my age, you know, it's a whole lifetime. The, and he likes to play ping pong. And he's really a good ping pong player. And he got involved with the city. And instead of sitting at home watching reruns of Blacklist, he put together a ping pong group for the city. And now, we have this thriving, I think it's free, ping pong activity going on at the fairgrounds, because he had a passion for it. And he's sharing it with the entire community. And I don't know of another city in the world that invites people with, with passions to come in and share them with the community and improve the well-being of the city as a whole as much as we do. And so for those of you who are sitting at home watching this meeting, you really have to examine your own life. I mean, could something be as boring as this on television, when you could be here? You could be engaged, you can be involved. You could become part of the fabric of this community, and we're finding that the people who do that love it. And, you know, we, we have open arms for you. This is not a closed club. And I hope you take us up on that. And those of you who know Jack, talk to him about it. I mean, it's, it's a... You know, he had this idea, went to city parks, city parks, bang, we've got this, I don't know how many bore, games he's got going at one time, but there's a lot of people having a lot of fun. There has to be a thousand other things we could be doing that with. You, you just gotta get off the couch, gotta call the city, come in and talk to Rhonda, and Rhonda will put you together. Isn't that right, Rhonda? Thank you. Now, Mark Shirck. You're the CEO of Blue Earth Energy.
Yes.
That almost sounds scary, you know that?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Perez and City Council. I may appear as a new face to you, I am new to the city meetings, however, I'm not new to you. You haven't seen me in a long time. Last time it was across from your desk in the nineteen eighties. I had, I was referred to...
Is I taking your deposition or something?
So, I owned a company called Solair, and I was referred to you by Kessler, and he was our attorney. And I, you might say I was ahead of my time, but now I see that you have really brought the solar industry to, not, let's not say peak, but it's been very impressive. So, now I'm ahead of my time again, and since then, I, I've gone to NASA, right in NASA Ames. And while I was at NASA Ames, another engineer named Gary Stork and I developed an innovative idea of combining recently-developed technologies of cryogenic thermosiphonic cascaded refrigeration and computer automation. Yeah, I know what that is. That's a problem. Not that you know it, but that, it's hard for people to understand. With two old thermo, but we combined those technologies with two old thermodynamic technologies, which we're all familiar with, and that's the Rankin power cycle that we see in all the power plants, or at least the fossil fuel ones, thermal ones, and the nuclear plants. And we also see the refrigeration cycle in our homes, air conditioners. They've been out over a hundred years, the Rankin cycle and refrigeration cycle. Well, Gary and I went on to patent these technologies, and we presently call it Blue Earth Energy Systems Renewable Energy and Atmospheric Water Cogeneration System. There are many applications that this self-sustaining technology can be applied to. Obviously, renewable energy power generation, self-sustaining central system air conditioning, refrigeration, cryogenic flash freezing, cold food storage, and the more interesting ones are atmospheric water generation and liquefaction, CO2 extraction, and sequestration. But one of the more interesting applications is it can also increase the capacity of solar modules fifty percent. Most solar will exceed, or solar will decrease, I think we all know...
Mark?
Yes?
Let me cut to the chase.
Okay.
What do you want?
Okay, so where I'm at right now is this technology, we were gonna, we were going to display it in operation adjacent to the city of Calabasas. And what had happened is we...
What do you want?
Okay, we need help. And I think, I know in the past you've helped us, I know you're in a different situation, but I think we can help you if you can help us. I know we could.
You sell it to Jason. You sell it to Jason. Jason vets it.
Okay.
Jason says it's good. We'll figure out a way to help you.
Great. Well, thank you.
Fair enough.
Sounds good to me.
Good. Set up a meeting with Jason, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon McDonald?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and commissioners. What would 20 million gallons of water do for the city of Lancaster? In July of 2014, a water main burst near the UCLA campus, which caused major damage to the surrounding areas. According to news reports, approximately 20 million gallons of water were wasted that day in a matter of hours. As a matter of fact, as I watched clean water spew from the pipe in horror, I do not recall seeing a single bucket attempt to save one drop of our precious wasted resource. This seems very careless because we have engineers who have so much control over our very lives due to the fact that the single most important resource on our planet is controlled very carelessly. But these same individuals make in excess of $230,000 per year. This doesn't even include the perks and bonuses that come with the job title. The Antelope Valley is desert. We all know that as such. I feel as though we should be entitled to more water than most cities. According to the Water Code, State versus Superior Court, underwriters at Lloyd London 2000, there's more, under section 102 of the Water Codes, the state of California owns water in a regulatory supervisory sense but does not own it in a prop -- Thank you. Sense. I've been trying to reverse that all day, just to let you know. Since I was a child, I have always known for Lancaster to run pretty smooth, for the most part.
Hold on, hold on. Turn off, turn off the clock. Take a deep breath.
You see I'm trying to hurry up, right? I'm not trying to hear you guys tell--
I'm telling you, don't hurry up.
Okay.
You've got all the time you need.
Okay. Thank you. Since I was a child, I've always known the Lancaster to run pretty smooth, for the most part. So when I hear and see that water usage, the number one most important resource in the world, that no living creature can live without, must be used sparingly, I find myself a bit more than concerned. Gail Farber, Director of Public Works, is responsible, along with her Chief Deputy Director Mark Pastrella, for this water crisis because the pipes that our water runs through are 100 years old. I'm starting to believe that the engineers that came before us were better than us due to the fact that these pipes have held up for so long. Gail Farber has been director since 2008, and although her job description justifies her salary, her actions do not. I want Gail Farber and Mark Pastrella in front of my mayor in my city explaining to us just how they are able to keep their jobs, salary, and pensions when the majority of the citizens of the Antelope Valley must be extremely cautious of our water usage or be punished. This seems to be, this seems to open the gates up for corruption in regards to our water in the state of California. The annual salary of the members of the board is provided. Each member of the board shall receive the necessary traveling and other expenses incurred by him in the performance of his official duties out of appropriations made for the support of the board. When necessary, the members of the board may travel with, within, or without the state. This is according to, this is the water, from Water Code 2015. I do not want to see my mayor disrespected by Public Works Water Works, sending any representatives that do not have the title of director. You're talking to our top authority? I need our top, their top authority figures out here as well. I just believe that when you are no longer performing at capacity, at a capacity necessary for effectively doing one's job, there should be consequences. According to the Valley Press, several residents have been asked to do something that I've never heard of before: limit water usage by 70 or 80%, which seems virtually impossible to accomplish. My 75-year-old grandmother was asked to do the same. These terms do not fall in line with the 25% water conservation orders. According to the Water Code, section 102, all water within the state is the property of the people of the state, but the right to use the water may be acquired by the appropriation in the manner provided by the law. I also noticed how proud officials were to learn of our 13.5 decrease in water usage in April. So what? What are we to do in July, August, September, and some of October when the temperatures average 100-plus degrees? I am all for cutting water usage, but when it's, when citizens are threatened with ridiculous rate heights due to the company providing the services, acting neglectfully, the compensation should come from the company, not the consumers receiving the service. Thank you. That's it.
Michael Reeves.
Mayor Perez, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I hope you each got a handout. This is a copy of a handout I got from the Senior Center. It's not a very good copy. I spoke with the director of the center today about making a better copy, but the point is I wanted to use this tonight and speak with you about the proposed shelter that we're going to have in Quartz Hill. And from what I heard in the grapevine, it's going to be open in August, and the homeless people are going to be bused from downtown to Quartz Hill. Last week, I was eating lunch at the Senior Center, and there was a lady next to me, and she was able, by memory, to give me this whole, all the information on this sheet about where the locations are in Lancaster to get food, et cetera. And I was shocked. I couldn't believe it. She said, "Well, there's no excuse for anyone going hungry in Lancaster." I guess not if you go by the sheet. But there's another problem here. We're going to ship these people across town to Quartz Hill to sleep, and then in the daytime, I suppose they're going to get kicked out of the shelter like they do here in town. And then what are they going to do? Maybe they're going to take the bus back downtown so they can take advantage of all these free services and food. It's something we need to think about and address now. And another thing, if you've noticed, all of you, there are more homeless people than ever around downtown, and it breaks my heart. And I see them outside the market. I see them all over town. You know, I want to go up to these people who are begging and say, "You know, instead of standing here for hours, why don't you go out and collect bottles and cans, and you can take them to the recycle place and get some money?" I mean, I do it when I'm strapped. I'll go out and sell bottles and stuff, and then I'll have a couple bucks to go to the Senior Center. Why can't you do it? But I dare not approach these people because some of them, even though they look physically fit, may not be mentally fit, and they won't appreciate my suggestions.
Just say nothing of it being none of your business.
Yeah. But, you know, Mayor Perez, we need to, we need to think about this. You know, how are we going to handle these people? Can we create, you know, work jobs for them or something so they can earn money and get self-respect? By just giving them free food and shelter and letting them shuttle back and forth, that's not going to do it. These people need to get back their respect and their honor, and some of them have the physical capacity to do it. Thank you.
Fran Serazares? I don't have a response to somebody who's going to go up to people and, or wants to go up to people and tell them to go collect bottles.
We're not busing them to Quartz Hill, and that's--
Well, then tell them. Explain to them.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Fran, can you hang on just one second?
Sure.
Because I need to correct a couple of things that--
Okay.
Michael just said, sorry.
It's okay.
Michael, we're not busing them to Quartz Hill.
No, I don't think so.
We're, they will be, have the ability to be located at 60th and I, which is not in Quartz Hill, it's in Lancaster. All the faith-based communities are partnering with us to help with all the different functions as far as getting a job, being able to get back into the work stream, doing everything. So it's just not being done like you presented it. So who's ever telling you these things is 100% wrong. Sorry, Fran.
No, thank you. And thank you for clarifying that, too, because I'm on your side, because I believe the same thing, and that's what I've heard.
I heard you were busing them to Palmdale.
Oh, I wasn't. No.
K-4 in town.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Fran, good evening. How are you?
Great, thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, and ladies and gentlemen, and anybody else who wants to hear me. First of all, I'm glad to hear about the bus fares. When is this meeting that you're going to have next Tuesday? Can I, can I come to this meeting?
Sure. It's at the ABA QMD. It's on, it's about K-4 in Division.
K, K-4 and Division?
Correct.
Okay. I think I can find it. I'll get some, okay. Thank you again for that.
It's at 10 o'clock next Tuesday.
Oh, I gotta write that down, because I have to get, 10 o'clock.
Public meeting.
Oh, it is a public meeting?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay. There again, thank you very much for your efforts. We, we need that really bad. But, okay, my thing was, it's ironic today you were talking about the roads, repairing the road situation, because I got on the phone this morning and talked to Pastor because I was, I was literally upset of how you, the road here around Fern at the other end was done. I thought that was finished, but I couldn't believe it could be finished like that because it was, it's atrocious. So everything that was said, that's what's going to happen. And that's what I kind of thought, but I said to myself, "I might check it," because some of these contractors don't always do what they're supposed to do. So I'm glad to hear that it's going to be taken care of. Another thing, I have a few things, but, and then I spoke with Norman Hickley on the Senior Center. I've got some good news on that. We have acquired the grassy area property, that there was a conflict with two entities, and we have it now. So now we're in another step forward in getting our senior building built. So it's going to be sooner than we think, but there again, everything takes time, but time is of the essence, and that's what's happening. I did want to kind of address, this was done at the, at the supervisors' meeting last week on, it might not pertain to this, but I think I just want to voice my voice on it, on the caregiver salaries. The caregivers want to get an increase of salary of $15 an hour. Boom, darn. Can I speak real quick on it? Right now, they're getting $9.65, but I didn't get a chance to go down there, and I didn't get a chance to speak up on this, but I, that's, did some thinking. And these, some of these people that live in these housing facilities, these home care hospitals, or I'm getting excited here. Anyway, what I did is--
All the time you need, Fran. All the time you need.
I compare the $15 to what the county is paying for this facility to house these people. It's a good thing. I mean, I'm not degrading it. I'm just trying to show them the evaluation, what they're putting on the house, the in-home caregiver. The professional giver in those hospitals, these assisted living facilities, you have doctors, you have professional nurses, you have maintenance people, you have nurses that take care of the patients, that wash, bathe them and keep their beds clean and take care of them. You have cooks, you have dieticians, and you're paying all these people all this money per day, plus your rent and your electricity and so forth. It does not come nowhere near $15 an hour. $15 an hour for these caregivers at home, they're taking care of these people that want to stay home, is a drop in the bucket. And these people that are doing it at 9.65, they're also putting their own lives in jeopardy because they have families, too, and they have to support their families. And I just wanted to speak up on that.
You know, when I need somebody to bathe me, I sure as heck hope he's making, or she's making, at least $15 an hour.
At least, right? At least.
I mean--
Uh--
Well, seriously. I mean, this could be us someday.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the whole thing.
Some of us sooner than others.
People don't realize that someday, you know, they're going to be in that, that situation. Like I was thinking, too, about the bus fares. Sure, last, what, 10, 15 years or whatever, they had average at, what, 38% or whatever? Now it's 50 or 60%. But they didn't stop to think. People are getting older, and our community is growing. What happened? Why didn't they take that into consideration when they were doing their budgets back then? Not now. And I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fran.
Thank you very much. Thank you. God bless you all.
Thank you.
Do we pay anybody less than 15 an hour?
You ask me. I don't get nothing. But, but, no, wait a minute. Let me, let me clarify that. Let me clarify that. It's not the money. I do this because I love doing it, and I love coming here, and the main thing is that you give me the privilege and the honor of being able to speak for other people that can't speak for themselves.
And we love to have you.
Thank you.
I mean that sincerely. Mr. Wazirian?
Yes, Sarah Sum.
Me and Ken.
You mean in terms of the city staff? Yeah, we have some part-timers that we hire for summer and stuff.
Any full-time employees less than 15 an hour?
I would highly doubt that. In fact, I know that's not the case.
Good. That's good.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's true. If we average the council out, it's about a buck and a quarter an hour based on that. I'm serious, based on the hours.
That's okay. We'll get them at the end.
You're not getting a raise.
Okay.
I'm not bathing you.
Jeff Little works for free, though, so he's the lowest paid on the whole dais.
Go ahead, Jeff Little's money, I'd throw mine away. David Paul.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Commissioners, good evening.
Hey, you're doing much better. No pain. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Must be working.
Mayor, thank you for inviting the public to come to these meetings. I come because I enjoy it so much, and I get to see the many accomplishments of this city and the council. It's really impressive. We do so much, and I am just so grateful. I was watching the news today, and it turns out that Donald Rumsfeld has come out and said perhaps it was a mistake to think we could introduce American democracy to Iraq. So it's not always as easy as it seems, and here we are. We're doing the things we have to do to make our city better. It's sometimes contentious, it's sometimes frustrating, but it's always worthwhile, and this staff has my appreciation. It is actually amazing what we accomplish here. We talk about problems that sometimes involve incompetency, sometimes neglect, but then there's another thing. It's pure evil. And I saw a Navy SEAL and a former Army Ranger talk about Iraq and the fact that Baghdad is in danger of falling to ISIS right now and returning everything we've given. And he, the Ranger talked about, the sniper, he talked about keeping your foot on the throat of the enemy. There are enemies amongst us that are not just incompetent or greedy, they're outright enemies. And when we raise our hand and swear to protect the Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic, Mayor, I just wanted to tell you in closing that I respect what you did to those frackers. That is incredible, and if you keep that up, not only could you run for governor, you might be up for president. That is incredible. Keep your foot on their throat and stop the people from destroying our planet. I appreciate that.
I think I'd make a wonderful president, but it would really be scary for the nation. I mean, think what a scary thought that would be. All right. Thank you. Are we having an executive session? Oh, good. Any comments from the council?
I do.
Yes.
Just want to point out that we talked about the sheriffs, the public safety. We talked about education tonight. We talked about water. We talked about roads. We talked about health. We talked about our seniors. We talked about kids. I think the city's heading in the right direction, and it has been going, and thank you, staff, for what a wonderful job you guys do.
That doesn't mean you get a break. Okay. We will adjourn tonight in memory of Reva Muns. Was a resident of Anil Valley for more than 65 years. She, along with her husband, operated a grain and cattle ranch on land which bordered the Poppy Reserve. She began teaching, was that the?
Muns.
Muns, yeah, okay.
You're on target, they're here tonight. I think the family's here.
Well, come on up. Well, you don't have to, it's just, we, you've been a family in this community for almost a century.
Yes.
Well, stay there, I'll come down and do it. Start over again. Mrs. Muns was a resident of the Anil Valley for more than 65 years. She, along with her husband, operated a grain and cattle ranch on land which bordered the Poppy Reserve. She began teaching English at Anil Valley High School in 1949, took a leave of absence to raise six children, and returned to teach at the high school from '73 to '89. Mrs. Muns was a life member of the PTA at Elser School and served on the West Side Union Board of Trustees. As president for several terms, she was active in the Cub Scouts 4-H Clubs. She will be missed by her family in the Anil Valley. The city council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, June 23rd. We are adjourning in memory of Reva Muns. We often forget that it was the, I mean, families that created this community, and they're still here. And we just got hundreds of thousands of people around us, but they're still here. And that the reason we're all here is because of them, and we're grateful. Thank you. You know, we really, we really should open these in honor, so you don't have to sit through the whole meeting. So, Mark, what happened to the idea of not making all of the staff be here and sit through these? Did we ever, ever work on that?
Well, I missed that meeting, which is why I don't miss meetings usually. I'd like to talk to you about that.
Okay. I think that means you guys are going to be here. But I tried. I mean, he's a tyrant, I know. We're trying to keep him under control.
How about if we just left Mark out?
What?
How about if we just left Mark out?
There's a thought. Okay, we're adjourned.